Barbara Gylender, address is on file. So first, I want to start off by thanking you for continuing to uphold the governor's order and allowing parents the right to choose in regards to masks. I know I've said that in many emails, but I just want to say it in person. So again, thank you, thank you for fighting for our children. Last time this year, I spoke to you about concerns regarding critical race theory being present in our schools and in our social emotional learning curriculum. The relationship between a parent and child is constitutionally protected, liberty, interest, under the due process cause of the Fourteenth Amendment. The values of parental direction, of the religious upbringing and education for their children in their early and formative years have been a high place in our society. The primary role of the parents in the upbringing of their children is established beyond debate and in Supreme Court cases. Based on this, parents have the right to opt out of certain teachings. Any concept that teaches that all Americans are not created equal, as Megan stated earlier, not endowed by their creator with certain unadmissible rights, or that one race is inherently superior to another, or that a certain race is oppressed or is the oppressor, is teaching critical race theory. Principals will be seen written opt-out notifications from parents in regards to such teachings. Violations of the opt-out will be documented along with proof of any necessary and possible actions for the future. Today, our governor announced that Florida is the education state. I certainly hope that one day soon, I can say I believe this. Opt-out forms will also be submitted for any surveys popular with the SEL curriculum. These surveys include things like pronoun preference. And thank goodness, he also today announced that he is eliminating Eureka Math, or Common Core, which goes against all fundamental principles and laws of math and community property. Thank you.
Hello. A couple of things I wanted to say. Thank you, Ms. Boden, for your comments, and I completely agree with you. And also, I wanted to express my appreciation to the bus drivers and the custodians, because that is a very thankless job, and they do a great job. I want to commend all of you for keeping up with the governor's mask, not masking our children. I think it's wonderful. And it's not that I have a problem with people who want to wear masks if they do. I completely support their choice. I just expect them to support my choice as well. But there is some very good news. The rate of new hospital admissions for COVID-19 is down 23% in the past seven days. Cases are down by 13.87%, and death testing with COVID is down 7.27%. So there has also been no reports of a youth dying of COVID since June 10th. So something is doing well, so that is very, very good. A couple of things that I wanted to address. During the last meeting, there were some topics brought up by the Equity Council, which I don't necessarily agree with the Equity Council, but they did make some few very good points that I would like to agree with. One, I don't believe people should have to state their address at these meetings, because as they were stating, a few of the people that I know have been doxxed because they had their addresses on file while they were being recorded. So please, let us not have to say that. Also, thank you for putting the wheelchair accessible aisle here, that's very nice. Couple of questions on the workshop items you were having for the EAC, which is Equity, Access Opportunity Community Team. I'm a little confused about this, because from what I'm hearing, it sounds a bit like it's the new CRT and it's the new segregation. I'm very confused, so I would appreciate some elucidation on this. If I'm incorrect, please correct me. Dr. Jones's slideshow was detailing how minorities do better when they're taught by a teacher of the same minority, or the same ethnicity, whatever. I would like to know where that research comes from. That seems very interesting to me, and I'd like digging into research. Also, if that's the case, and I know Pasco has a shortage of teachers, are you hiring teachers because they're the right color? Or are you hiring teachers because they're the right credentials? Because if you're just hiring somebody because they match, they tick the spot on a form, is that really helping our children? That would be my question for that. Also, if you are wanting to make sure that children get teachers of the same color, period, or whatever, isn't that segregating? Because shouldn't we just be all inclusive? If it's about equity and everybody being equal, well, shouldn't all people be equal? Anyone in their classifications as teachers? A couple other points that I wanted to make was, I know you're going to be getting the CDC grant, so I would just like to know when are we going to find those picnic tables? And I do hope you put some of that money towards suicide prevention, because that's a big problem. Thank you.
Amen. All right. John Palmer and Debbie Parker.
Hello, Superintendent, and Board, and Staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, John Palmer. I spoke last week, and last week, you started the meeting also with a moment of silence. That was for Jeff Collins. And today, you started with a moment of silence for two staff, Mary Van and Joanne Fenton. I don't know if you can answer this, but I wonder if those were COVID deaths. And last week, I also mentioned that a friend of mine's coworker was on a ventilator. Well, when I left here last week, I was informed that he passed. He left kids without a dad. And again, the figures that were given were that this has caused $12 million in claims to Pasco County. I believe the figure also was that there's 420,000 cases of COVID in Pasco. And we talk about the parental rights. Parents have the right to send their kids to schools that are safe. We have the right to know that when our kids go to school, they're not going to come back and infect the family. And we're not going to have families dying because it's being spread around in schools. The Judge Cooper, in his ruling, which I listened to carefully, he weighs, there's a balancing act, legal balancing act. What's the weight against the governor versus the weight against the danger to our kids? The governor, he's going to be embarrassed that he doesn't have ultimate power over us all. But every single day, our kids face the danger of going to school, getting infected, bringing home that virus to their family, and killing off family members. I plead and beg you, please, pass a school mask mandate. It's for the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Debbie Parker, if you can stand a second.
Good evening, thank you Superintendent, and the Board for listening class. I've been here 38 years. I know this county well. What I'm talking to you about tonight is bus drivers. That's what I do for a living. And you started off the meeting with the word civility. We have not seen civility and support in our district for our bus drivers. We are constantly being berated by parents because we are late. Our people are doubling, tripling, calling back and coming and picking up kids, exposing themselves to more children than they should be every day. But still, we're not getting any support from anybody regarding this, because we are losing drivers right and left, not only to sickness, but because they are leaving because of the pay scale at the school district. You have got people that are really good drivers and have been here for years, but they are leaving because they don't feel the support you guys talk about. We don't see it, we don't feel it. Or working in 100-degree weather, do we get any eye swatter from anywhere? No. You, as a Board, need to do more for us, because we have been told that we are your essential workers, and we are the support of your school systems throughout. It hurts me to say that we have had drivers that have had parents come up and attack them on the buses verbally, because they are late all the time. These drivers are volunteering to help out and take routes. When a driver gets sick and we hear that somebody's sick, we automatically, we don't have to have our office tell us to go do it, we automatically do it. But our office doesn't have personnel in it either, because they're all out driving. If there's an accident, we have to wait for somebody to come help us. We do not have enough support in the transportation division, and we need help. Your district needs your help. Your children in this district need your help for this reason. It hurts me to say that in the high 38 years in this county, this is the worst I've seen people be to other people, especially people that are working to take care of their children. And we need support from the Board. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished Board members. My name is Davis Smith-Joe, and I'm here representing some of the bus drivers. I say, but I say, "your" drivers, actually, because they are your drivers. We're here, don't interplay no, trying our hardest to get these students to school. We don't quit, we don't leave students behind, we do everything there is to get these students to school. As drivers, we share the parents' and teachers' frustrations with situations that cause buses to be late, and in turn, cause students to be late to school and even miss classes. There are many circumstances that are at heart of this frustration, at least of which is a software program that has taken the human element completely out of routing for these buses. Also is the pain for these bus drivers. We have drivers that have been in this system for 15 years, and if you calculate the raises from the time they started to now, it equals 10 cents a year. We have drivers that have to work seven days a week to earn a living for this county. We're doing something that a lot of people wouldn't touch with a 10-foot pole. Nobody wants to get on that bus and see what we go through every day. This may sound flippant, but it's not. It's the tip of the iceberg for the concerns as a driver. Unfortunately, we are dealing with these conditions and situations that would send many people not familiar with our world running away. We do appreciate the positives that we receive. Kind words from our kids and parents, backup at teachers, administrators, and yes, even law enforcement when we need it. However, we do not appreciate and do not deserve as those students who feel they have the right and privilege to act out on our buses, to use abusive language, to berate and bully other students and drivers, to leave our buses filled with dirt and trash and totally disarray at the end of their runs, which we are responsible for cleaning without any extra pay. We do not deserve the diatribes, very recently, nearly a physical attack by parents who, for whatever reason, feel the behavior is proper and acceptable, especially when they let loose in front of the kids on the bus. This is why we're here tonight. We could have come to and participated in many other Board meetings, but like you, our teachers, and others in the school system, parents, kids, we're tired. Getting up at 4:30, not returning until 5:00 or 6:00 at night, this is the norm. We skip the meetings. It is as important as they are, but not tonight. Not for the ones that would not have, or one of our own was verbally attacked and came close to being physically abused. We did not sign up for this. Thank you.
Please, Board. My name is Joseph King, address is on file. I'd like to say that I do support them. I mean, I've been a driver myself, and I know what they have to go through. It's ridiculous. You guys are talking about the civility and everything. Everything with this COVID is just getting crazy. You have maskers versus anti-maskers, everybody's judging, everybody jumping at everybody's throat. It's crazy. The gentleman up here earlier said everybody needs to take a step back and look at everything. I think that's a good message for everybody. Now, enough of feelings, I'm going to deal with some facts with you guys. Data collected by a COVID-19 school response dashboard, which is run by education groups, including the School Superintendent Association, has shown that districts with no mask mandates have had actual lower case rates. One of the things, the human body is designed to expel waste through exhaling and holding waste against your face with a mask, breathes bacteria with the moist environment on your skin. Another thing is, masking young children, I think, has a different effect than, say, a teenager. Young children, such as a kindergarten, they're still learning a lot of things. They're learning facial expressions and social cues, et cetera. And when they can't see that, it has an adverse effect on them. Eliminating this part of human interaction should not be underestimated as far as the effect that it has on kids. You know, the lack of attention, the mental health, paralyzing fear, anxiety, withdrawal from social interactions, it's all detrimental to the health of our kids. And it's something that should be taken into consideration. Again, if you want to wear your mask, you have that opportunity, you know? But there is studies that shows that masks aren't overcracked up. You have to weigh the person account, so take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problem, ma'am. Thank you all for allowing me the time to speak, Superintendent, Board members, and all others in attendance. My name is Mark DiAmelino, my address is also on file. Today, I'm here again, I was here last week, to ask and to implore you to look into and proceed with the implementation of a mask mandate for all students, faculty, and staff of our schools to attend Pasco County. I'd ask you to do this to follow the CUC guidelines, the suggestions of the American Academy of Pediatric Medicine, among other various groups and scientists and doctors. I'm also here to ask you to look into why this hasn't been voted on by our Board. We have you here as elected officials, nonpartisan elected officials, to the positions of school Board members. By Florida statute, you have an obligation, statutory obligation, to ensure proper attention to the health, safety, well-being of the students in Pasco County, as the other school Boards do across the state of Florida. I would ask you this more as a question as to why our Board in particular, among many others in the state, have remained silent on this issue, allowing these statutory obligations to be decided on by our Governor. When you're duly elected officials that we entrust with this obligation, among many others outlined in the Florida statutes, talked about freedom and parental rights, which I don't think anybody would be against here, regardless of which side of the fence you stand on. But I'm asking you as a Board to look at, within regards to those freedoms and those parental rights, and the message that that is being used to ban the mask mandate, that's why. Why is the information that was readily available from the beginning of the pandemic on a daily basis by the DOH here in Florida not available to you or to any of us to make those decisions, to mitigate safety for the students of Pasco County and for our children? It's not fair. I'm requesting you to have a vote for this mask mandate. I'm not demanding you to vote the way I think. I'm asking you as a Board to vote as we elected you to do. Obviously, for the safety of our schools, but also to send a message that you, as our duly elected and trusted school Board officials, are the ones that should be entrusted to do the job that you are elected to do, and that you will not be bullied or put into this situation by politically motivated and, to me, what is an autocratic rule from our Governor. I ask that you guys do this, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Rebecca Yelling, the NASTA, Natalie.
Good evening. I'm here, David Warian, Mr. Ramon. I ask for these listen stickers to be taken out from the doors, they're still on the doors. They're not for everybody. Are we going to allow teachers to independently promote signs of different groups and further segregate the students in the schools? Because I'm just curious, this organization is anti-Christian, anti-law enforcement. So it's a simple thing, just have to take it down. I understand my daughter had to deal with three issues in the first week that disrupted her learning because of things like this. You also said in response to my statement in the last school board meeting that you are not collecting data from the lesson. I understand that, maybe, but Glisson is collecting data from my kids, my Philly Health forms. So, yes, it's illegal. I sent an email out, so much of the people on here, we have a person, a parent, on the Equity Advisory Committee, that is, well, she doesn't like conservatives, she doesn't like Christians, she doesn't like law enforcement, she invited Black Lives Matter to Pasco here. I understand that there's somebody here from that group here today. The other Cardi is currently in jail in Humanity County from incident here this morning. I'm just curious, when is a school going to stick up for the rights of everybody as one? Discrimination, discrimination, I don't care if you're black, white, purple, have cards come on your house or not, your head. Why can't we all unify these groups together against hate? Like, I don't understand why we have to segregate these groups. If I see somebody of any group doing something that promotes hate, I speak up. I don't care what my religious beliefs are, what my political beliefs are, you shouldn't be talking to people that way. It's spread down to the kids. Yes, I feel bored about these bus drivers. By the way, there is a group of parents working on helping these bus drivers by giving them thank you cards and stuff, so on. There is a portion of the community that, we are here trying, but I'm asking, I don't understand why every time I gotta look at something, my daughter wants to talk to a school counselor and this and that, I have to look on their social media pages and go, oh my God, they support Black Lives Matters, they're anti-Christian. We paid a lot of money to make sure that the proper people are in place, this doesn't happen. Do I feel my daughter's safe at school? Hell, no, I do not. I worry every day she's at school. I do. I do, I worry for her. So to tell me that my kid's safe and in a safe space, no, she's not. I want everybody safe, of every race and every color. And so you get this propaganda down and it disallows these teachers to do this independently, you're still going to have this ref. It's that simple. Sending emails, as long as the stickers stay up, all these people crazy, I'll keep talking.
All right. Natalie.
Same issue that Fishy Ling addressed at the last meeting, last week, and we have dealt with that issue. And every time that an issue comes up like this, we deal with her. So she continues to bring it up, I'll continue making the same statement after she speaks at every meeting, because we have dealt with this issue, and it's done.
But the stickers are still up, and that's why she's still bringing it up?
So let me talk about the stickers, and I tried to make my point clear last time, is that these stickers on the doors in order to provide our students with a safe place to go. Contrary to what some of us may think, is that there are students out there that are marginalized, that don't feel like they have a safe place to go, except to a counselor, to a teacher, to a custodian, to an administrator. And all that sticker does, all that sticker does just indicate to that student, and it doesn't segregate students, whether they're Christian, or Jew, or white, or black, or Hispanic, or pink, green, purple, with horns on their heads. It does not do anything like that. And to actually stand here and to say that those stickers would indicate that certain classes of kids aren't safe in our schools? Well, you're wrong. You're wrong, because let me just tell you that we have...
They split the school two years ago.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to finish my comment.
Yes, please. You wanted to hear from him, let him talk.
And I was going to apologize for having my buttons pushed, but when you start making false claims about what teachers, or administrators, or what this district is doing or not doing, I can't just idly sit by and let people walk out of this room thinking that's what's happening in this district. You brought up the pronoun issue. We've dealt with that pronoun issue. We have dealt with those teachers that were dealing with the pronoun issue. We have dealt with them. We've dealt with them. And as we get other reports of that, we deal with it at the time. To say that our kids are not safe in our schools, I don't know where anyone's been, but with the added law enforcement, with the training that we provide, Marjory Stoneman-Dubois Act that's been passed by the legislature, we spend so much money on student safety in this district, and we should spend that kind of money. But just for you to come up to a podium or a dais and then just flippantly throw out that it's not safe to be in our schools, that statement is not true. If there is, if...
My feelings are not different.
Let me finish. If there are specific issues that you need to have addressed, you need to talk to Ms. Hepsar Mettles, the principal of that school, so we can begin to resolve those. And if you'd like, Ms. Dr. Isles would certainly help facilitate those issues as well. So I just, it's every meeting, and again, this is the same stuff, Board members, that continues to sidetrack us. And I just want the Board to know that I'm not sitting idly by, that we're just letting our students do what they want to do, that they're tearing schools apart, that they're being unruly. I agree with bus drivers tonight. I would like to say, and I will say, that the behavior that you see, I think, is family-driven. It's family breakdown that causes kids to behave the way they behave. I will just tell you right now, if I even thought about doing that when I was a kid, not only would I have been, have my bottom end beaten by the principal, but when I got home, I would have gotten it again from my mama and my daddy. But you don't see that today. You don't see it today. There's a total lack of discipline, there's a total lack of civility in everything that we're doing, and it's exacerbated by the fact that we're all COVID wrapped around the axle. We work hard in this district, each and every day, trying to ensure a safe environment for everybody, our students and our staff. Do we hit the mark every day? No, we don't. But we are working our tails off to ensure that we are providing a safe environment. I'm going to stop here. I'm going to stop here.
Hello, my name is Natalie Cronin. You have my address on file. And as far as why somebody might not feel safe seeing a Black Lives Matter sticker, I'm sorry, mister, they have threatened me before. This is why I am not announcing my address. They have tracked me down and threatened me. So no, if I see somebody have a sticker supporting this organization with people that threaten me, no, I'm not inclined to really feel greatly safe about that, I'm in that place. No, sorry, though. About this civility, I am glad to hear people encouraging civility. It is not acceptable to be attacking bus drivers. I used to ride the bus when I was in a school. You know, it would not have occurred to me or my mom to go around attacking bus drivers. And instead of this contact tracing, you can't find people to do this contact tracing. Well, my suggestion, why not take this money and give it to these bus drivers? You have them doing the work of two, three people, they should get the money of two, three people. I think that is fair. That is absolutely fair. We should do that instead. And as far as people saying this, the young man over here, he was asking about, oh, were these people that we had the moment of silence for, did they die from the COVIDs? You know, I'm sorry, dead is dead. We do not have more important dead and lesser dead. That is absolutely a terrible question, mister. I'm sorry, no. They are dead, their families will miss them. That is all you, as an unconnected stranger, and all of us, need to know and have compassion for. Yes. And as far as, you were mentioning, taking a step back. Taking a step back means, you know, having less of these issues that people are up to hear of. Because on Thursday, it was declared, you know, that they have intention to basically starve people into submission with their mandates, with this vaccine. So yes, that has a lot of people very concerned, very upset, and as far as taking a step back, a great step back would be to say, no, we aren't going to be forcing these things on people, we aren't going to be asking them all these questions about what they're putting in and on their bodies, we are going to leave them to step back, leave people alone, give people a chance to calm down, and remember that everybody is people, to remember that people are, you know, that they are people. I think there is a lot of that going on that people forget, that others are people, and this is terrible, and it needs to stop. So yes, please, we do take a step back, a step out of all of this, a step for sanity. You know, we are not going to take away your masks, we are not going to take away your vaccines. I can't in good conscience advise anybody to get said vaccine, but if you really, really want it, I am not going to stop you. And that is how... And that is how, you know, our side is not the same as them. Thank you.
And then, Tia, uh, the, the treaty?
I think you might be my team. I, I am the representative of Pasco Concerned Parents for a COVID Safe School. I wanted to tell you, I'm here today because I have a son that was born at 24 weeks and two days premature. He had chronic lung disease and asthma. He has struggled with learning disorder over the last year and a half due to the fact of leaving his teacher, and I am not one. Educators and administrators are tasked with the tremendous responsibility of not only educating our students, but also keeping them safe and healthy in the midst of global pandemic. I thank you guys for trying to do that. At the last meeting, you tasked us parents with volunteering, while I have done that, and I'm here to report. Well, your teachers have told me they are suffering from depression, PTSD, anxiety, they are stressed and depressed. And the reason why they are not coming to these meetings is because, as the bus driver stated, they are exhausted. The full-time job of preparing the work for the classroom that is not there due to COVID is exhausting them. They are repeatedly disregarded and put in harm's way over what we feel is politics. They fear retribution if they come to meetings and speak out while their unions stand by silently. My children's school has a 17 total cases last year. Today, they are over-doubled that with 36 cases. We have had only 25 days of school. We must be prepared to make the challenging adjustments now so that we can keep our students and administrators back in school while prioritizing the health and safety of every individual who walks into your school building. As an immune-compromised person in Pasco County, I understand the pushback on the mandatory mask requirements. However, the evidence and science is very clear about the benefits of face covering to stop the spread. And since I have a few more moments, while I'm here, I'm told you to use your power to mask mandate. As a child of a close to suicide, I thank you for using the last meeting to raise awareness on this issue. I also would like to encourage the board to educate themselves on the importance of the regular use of preferred pronouns. This is a cause for suicides. It is important that we embrace each other and that while fostering safe work in school environments and settings for all. Lastly, I am here to tell this board that I will not stand for the criminalization of our children that is taking place through your data sharing with Pasco sheriffs. Stop the school-to-prison pipeline now. You are tasked with the responsibility of protecting our children, so do so now. Masked Pasco County Schools now. And also Chairman, who is not here, I would like to ask you to enforce this ability clauses much more inherently, because the folks who are in here today are not aligned by that. Thank you.
All right, Tia, and then Michelle, uh, Mayor of the Evening. I wish I could take back my 45 seconds from Tuesday morning. Unfortunately, I won't be able to. I just moved here recently. I'm Tia from Chernay. I'm not gonna give my exact address. Yeah, they're on file. I just found out about this meeting this morning. I'm not sure if that's how we operate here in Pasco, that we just pull up meetings randomly. I just found out about it today, but, um, I'm surprised that we're even here yet so quickly when there's so many other things going on around us. I want to say thank you, Mr. Brown, for taking the mask off before and actually being you and speaking from the heart. I hope that we can all do that in the future. I talked about having respect for each other and kindness towards each other's decisions on what we should do about our children's health and benefits of education, having people over here with the guilting and the manipulating and trying to convince everyone that if we don't follow their ideas, that everyone around us is gonna die, is ridiculous. They don't know our health conditions, medical conditions. And the fact that we're even here in 2021, arguing and fighting over mask mandates and things like this, it, it's just so mind-blowing today. I can't even believe, in this day and age, that this is what our top priority is, of whether or not we should mask someone else's child. I'm getting anxiety looking at all of you people masked up, when you know damn well, if we were at dinner, nobody's gonna be wearing a mask. We're all gonna be laughing and chatting and, and, uh, you can churn cocktails. But here, in this room, everybody has to be someone else. When are we all going to be real? Our children's lives are on the line right now. If I didn't have kids, I wouldn't be here. I really wouldn't be here, I wouldn't give a damn. I left New York, I have family that just came down to visit me. I left them to come to this meeting, because I'm afraid that you people are gonna take charge of my responsibility and put masks on my kids, and I'm gonna have to pull my kids out of school so they can get a real education without being dictated to. Yes, thank you so much for your comments. I wish I could have my 45 seconds from Tuesday. I have so much to say. Michael, um, and then after that, then it'll be Michael, okay?
Um, I'm Michelle, and I work, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. Uh, in the beginning of the pandemic, I was working at the airport, one of the places you do not want to be during a pandemic. I was terrified. In fact, I was one of the first in my company to volunteer to go home for two weeks to slow the spread before the lockdown. I was scared just like everyone else. But I stand before you today to tell you why my views have changed and why I do not want to mask my daughter. If you look at the PCR tests, the golden standard for testing, you probably wouldn't know that the PCR is not a test at all. It is a tool. PCR stands for polymerase chain reaction. It, by definition, is a fast and inexpensive technique used to amplify copies, small segments of DNA. The creator of this technology, Carrie B. Mullis, has been quoted to say that with PCR, if you do it well, can find almost anything in anybody, and that it does not tell you that you are sick. The creator of this technology told us it's not a test. Now, if it's easy to find a molecule of anything in anybody, it does not surprise me that the CDC has announced it's replacing the PCR test, and that the FDA recalled a few rapid tests as well. This is because they know it doesn't work efficiently. And, uh, on the WHO website, it states that most PCR assays are indicated as an aid for diagnosis, therefore healthcare providers must consider any of the results in combination with a lot of sorts of things, such as sampling, specimen type, assay specifics, clinical observations, patient history, and more. I don't know about you, but that's a lot to consider for a test that is supposed to detect a deadly virus. And it's disturbing. So that, with that being said, I don't understand how we can state without a fiber of a doubt that all the cases we are hearing about are positive cases, true positive cases, which most are asymptomatic, which brings me to the next topic. Most doctors, reputable ones, have said that asymptomatic spread, it just doesn't happen. Even Dr. Fauci has been quoted stating, "In all the history of respiratory board illnesses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks. The driver of outbreaks is always asymptomatic person." So why are we masking our children? But I want to thank you guys for giving us the choice.
Amen. All right, that's the question. And then, Dr. Willoughby, tonight. All right, uh, Michael, you can pronounce your last name, please.
That's fine. That's my wife, she's had a lot of stuff that I was gonna say. I agree with the other lady, we don't need AD contact tracers, okay? We can give that to the bus drivers. I like that idea a lot, because contract tracing is just trash science. Are you gonna bring in scientists to contract trace? My daughter was in school about a week and change ago, and she was one of three in the whole class for a whole week, because they contract traced it. How do they figure out that 95% of the class was at risk and not three kids? It's trash. It's ridiculous. The whole class missed school the whole week because somebody said somebody was near somebody in lunchroom. Right? This is madness. It's ridiculous. And like my wife said, the PCR tests are useless. The CDC retracted them because they don't tell the difference between the flu, any COVID virus, any kind of cold. It's just, oh, positive, so it must be COVID. Eliminate everybody from the wing of school, eliminate everybody, tell them to stay home. The madness has got to stop with this stuff. And when it comes down to the mask stuff, we're happy that we have the choice here, but we have a feeling with this committee, if DeSantis's case fell through, you guys would vote to put him back on. And that's the madness of it all. Nobody here is even wearing a mask properly, nor the proper mask. Go home for a fun science experiment, turn it to the side and read the fine print, most of them say does not protect against viruses, especially the blue ones. Okay? So there's no conformity here. Everyone's living in their own world of psychosis, called Stockholm Syndrome. We put the mask on in the morning, and we feel safe, but nobody is actually safe. Coronavirus is between two and four microns wide. Those beavs on those masks are dozens and dozens of microns wide. It's like taking a handful of marbles and throwing it through a chicken wire fence. You are not protected from any virus with any of these masks on ever since day one. There are nine studies that were put up on the CDC website, on and off, none of them definitively say that those masks work. And if they did say that they mask work, it wouldn't be any of the ones you're wearing, or the house-made ones, or the ones that have been hanging in your car for a week and you keep putting them on your face. That's the insanity of it all. They're the filthiest thing in the room, is the stuff on your face. You understand that? You're hurting yourself, you're re-breathing, your own exhale, bacteria breaks up. I study micrology for a hobby. I study funguses, because I'm gonna start a mushroom farm, I've been doing it my whole life. When I walk in, come in here, and I see you people, I wanna rip my hair out. You are making yourself sicker, and that includes the children, which have almost no cases of COVID in this state. Very few kids have died with a COVID-only stamp on their thing, because they don't differentiate. When you walk into a hospital, you have to take a test. If I walk in with a heart attack, and they stick something up my nose while I'm dying, I am now a positive COVID case. There's no differentiating between what is a positive COVID case and not. We're all playing in this ridic, this ridiculous madness. You have to wake up tomorrow, take them on your face, and realize we have to live a new life of sanity.
Amen.